All right, good to go.
Also, Chen.
All good.
All right, so being six thirty PM on Wednesday, August seventeenth, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for this evening. I'll read the town manager's guidance on imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be connected via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded within forty-eight hours. We'll post a link to the town's website and our social media pages. The following Bridgewater Planning Board members participating remotely this evening. Patrick Triscoll, Chair, Mr. Raymond Jimian. Is Mrs. Is Miss Asuka Ross with us yet?
I'm here.
Miss Asuka Ross, Mr. Michael McDonald, and an associate member, MJ Spagon. Is Mr. Haley with us this evening?
Ted said he could not make it today.
During the meeting, I'll go to be taken as role models. The following Bridgewater Town staff is participating remotely. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town of Bridgewater planning. There's no more staff today, correct Shane?
Yep, just me.
At this time, everyone's mics are muted. The boards might be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on each end of the projects representatives' mics are unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows proper comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listening to your name and address any questions. The chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the persistent menu and be unmuted from the chair recognition screen. Again, please state your name and address before your question during the form of the style nine to raise your hand. So item one called order, we took care of that. Item two, we have a public hearing scheduled for this evening. This is a continuation of two ten Broad Street. By two ten Broad Street, R T LLC, a site plan and special permit request. This is continued from August third, twenty twenty-two. We did receive a continuing request from the applicant asking to be put on our September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. I'll open it up to board discussion, and if we're okay with the continuance, somebody can make that motion. Any board discussing? Any staff comments?
No, we have no issue with the the continuance. Had a discussion with Mr. Eric Diaz, he's on vacation one of those weeks. So we're hoping that they can provide the information to us. Lucky for them to get an extra week by the thirty-first or before, and they should be hopefully good to go for September seventh.
Great. We did receive a letter from Mr. Diaz. Do you want that right into the record, or is that just noting that we had that sufficiently, Mr. O'Brien?
Oh, I think just noting that we did receive an email and a attached letter from Strong Point Engineering Services.
So do we have a board motion to continue that to September seventh?
I'll make the motion that we continue the two-ten Broad Street to September seventh.
At six thirty PM?
At six thirty.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Is that Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Yeah, me as. So the next item we have is item three, board business. This is an A and R plan for one thirty Conant Street and Nelson Drive. I believe the applicant's representatives are here from Silver Engineering, so I will turn it over to them.
Yes, thank you. Rebecca from Silver Engineering for one thirty Conant Street and Nelson Drive. We're looking to add the extra ten thousand square feet needed for a four-bedroom home over on the end of the Nelson Drive cul-de-sac. I believe it's the last of the vacant lots out there. Oh, there you go. That's nice. And it's exactly what you had mentioned before. They need the extra ten thousand to add a four-bedroom dwelling on the lot. They have an agreement with the abutting parcel, which is family to be able to 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 capture the ten thousand square foot needed.
So wouldn't that wouldn't lot eighty-eight A now just be, was it two separate parcels, Rebecca? Is it going to be parcel A M eighty-eight A?
No, they're going to be combined. So the intent of the plan is to convey parcel A with the square footage, so the assessors can keep track to eighty-eight to form well, two new lots, which would be an eighty-eight A, which is what you see. I'm pointing with my mouse like you can, like I'm sharing and I'm not. So the thick bold line ends up becoming eighty-eight A and forty-eight A is reshaped into minus the parcel A portion.
So wouldn't that dotted line be a solid line?
It's an it's marking the what it would is showing you what the end result will be by dashing the middle line is what would be an old property line.
So it's going to be one lot at forty-two thousand square feet.
Correct. Forty-two thousand and change.
Why why is parcel A still listed there? Wouldn't it just be eighty-eight A with the square footage?
I've seen them both ways. I've seen them the way you're expecting, and I've seen them not the the way they're shown here. So I think it's just preference on how the Land Severa wanted to illustrate it. And by saying in the intent that it was a parcel to be combined with, it's it's just a better way to account the land. I don't. You're not there to sign it. I can make a change if it's just aesthetics that you'd like to see.
Well, Mr. O'Brien, or board members, any comments? So I mean.
Yeah, I just have a yeah, a quick comment. I understand it from the way it's presented on the plan. I think it's fine. I think it does cause some confusion because it I think their intent is to combine them, but I think in the way that they present it, I don't I don't find an issue with it in its current state. I think I just would note that while it does mention that lot A is going to be conveyed, I think that's the biggest issue because without mentioning some sort of conveyance to an additional parcel, you're essentially creating a parcel without frontage and, you know, that goes against A and R. So I think the conveyance is important in terms of the language that they provide.
So calling it a parcel A to be conveyed is a is a is a check plus, right? Check.
I it helps. It helps me help you.
Yeah. Good.
And just, and I guess just to make sure there's no confusion in the future, why wouldn't we just call the whole thing lot eighty-eight A, remove the dash and add two square footages?
Again, it it comes down to a preference in how the Land Severa wanted to illustrate it.
And Mr. O'Brien, you have no problem with it?
No, as long as that language of conveyance to the adjacent property owner, as long as it says to convey parcel A to map sixty-three lot eighty-eight to form these two lots, as long as there's a conveyance, I have no issue with it.
But it says two lots. It's really one lot.
Well, you're reconfiguring the forty-eight A. So forty-eight A is going to have a different assessor and a different a different square footage. So so that's why it's both. It's two new lots configured as shown.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it. I understand why you're doing it. I just.
It feels it feels different, right?
It'd be cleaner, a different a different way, and we're used to kind of see it a different way.
And is this and is this because this is the way Pilling does it versus tank?
Uh. Yes, without saying yes, yes, I'll say yes. We're not naming names. Yes.
Well, I got the stamp, so.
I yeah, I know. Yes.
All right. Any board questions or comments?
Well, I just this is the way we were talking about something that may not be considerate or important, but the way it's being presented now, will that potentially cause a problem into the future? In terms of if one with if a lot is sold or whatever is that? I'll go along with what what has been proposed, as long as we don't have a issue at some point in the future when a lot is sold, one of the lots.
No, I as long as portrayed as a separate parcel as being conveyed, as long as it, you know, we'll have a ironically, a project in an upcoming month that deals with these issues, but I don't see the case here.
So Rebecca, it says the intent of this plan is to convey parcel A to map sixty-three lot eighty-eight to form two new lots eighty-eight A and forty-eight A as shown. But eighty-eight A now really is a forty-two thousand and change square foot lot, right?
Correct. It's the thirty-two, three hundred and plus the ten thousand. But by demarking the old property line, it's it's clear for, I know Mr. Jamie was concerned about the future, but it kind of makes it clear what it was before. So when you try to recreate this, it's it's mathematically all there.
Just different than I'm used to, I guess, but.
I can see that.
Board questions or comments? Do we have a motion to endorse? Very important motion to endorse?
Yeah, I'm going to endorse.
Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
A second, Ben.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Yeah, me as.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item four on the agenda, we have an informal concept plan presentation by Edwood Development Company to the planning board, just to discuss a potential project at one eighty Broad Street. This is the Henry Perkins Foundry site. Mr. O'Brien, if you want to take over and introduce the proponents and take us now.
Sure, I'll do a. So this is kind of a interesting little, I guess, concept. It's not a public hearing. We have it's essentially a concept plan. There's nothing. There's no files. There's no application. We did get some renderings and a concept plan from Edwood Edgewood, as well as a presentation that will be presented now. I just want to kind of remind the board of it is a presentation directly to the planning board. You know, there will be a public hearing process if this application is applied for, and we will go through that process as well as other boards and commissions that may be necessitated through this, but I just want the board to be aware. It's not a public hearing. There's no need to take public comment. But I will introduce the team over at Edgewood Realty. Oh, I'm sorry. Edgewood Development Company. So they'll be.
Shane, I think I think the way we'll handle this is that, you know, have the the applicant present.
Sure.
Just so and then we'll have the board ask questions about the project. And then just, you know, if there are members of the public that want to comment or ask questions, I think we should allow that at the end of the hearing, at in that the hearing with the discussion, I should say.
Sure. I just want to know this is a public hearing.
Hearing and I and I slipped when I just said that, so.
Sure. Oh, it's no problem. But yeah, I'll I'll leave the floor out to Steve Meltzer.
Good evening, everybody. So this is not our first rodeo here with respect to presenting a concept. For the record, Steve Meltzer with Edgewood Development Company. With me is Mr. Sherry LaRusso. Shane, I don't know if you're going to allow me to share my screen in order to present slides or if you're going to be running that. Which way?
You can run it.
Okay. So let me let me pull up my screen and then I'll get started. Sure, I pull up the right screen. Okay, so can can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good. So so as as many of you know, and I'm not sure how many of you are maybe in the members of the public or on the board who did not see any of our our previous presentations and discussions on this. So I guess I'm going to apologize ahead of time if it's repetitive, or some of it is repetitive to some of you. But I'm going to run through these pretty quickly, sort of present our concept for the site and some of the details that we have worked out and and our hope and our goal for tonight is really just to to get some feedback, and I understand perfectly well that the feedback isn't isn't binding on anybody, but we would like to to hear thoughts as they come up, both from the board members and if there are members of public of the public who who the chair would like to to entertain comments from as well. So this site the site is and the is the Henry Perkins Foundry. Right now, as you can see on the site plan, that's the across from Spring Street, the railroad tracks run by it. I I would be surprised if people aren't familiar with the site. It's across the street from the the shopping center. On the left here is sort of the the overview of the site. On the right, showing the buildings. It's a big mishmash of of buildings that were built up since the foundry got started. And just a quick history, it was founded in eighteen forty-eight by members of the Perkins family. The Perkins family still owns the site and still operates the site. They are the sellers. I actually have a hundred and seventy-two years, but that was when we came in two years ago and started this process. It's actually been in existence now for a hundred and seventy-four years. My guess is that they'll make one seventy-five, and my hope is that they won't make one seventy-six. The current site right now, as I said, is a is a big conglomeration of buildings that were built up over the years. There's some very old, some old. Some you might say new, but that is only relative to the older ones. And there's some aerial photos of of the area and the buildings. What we intend to do is make this a mixed-use development. As many of you know, the site previously was was split into two zoning districts, industrial in the back and CBD in the front. We went through a process with the town council in order to get a rezoning done so that the entire parcel is now within the CBD zone. Previously, we weren't able to even make an application because residential and mixed use was not allowed in industrial, but now we are. And since that rezoning, we've gone through sort of an extensive redesign process based on the feedback that we got from this board and from the town council, so that we could hope to to approach and and satisfy the concerns that were brought up during that process. But here's listed on this slide are a few of the things that we hope to accomplish by by bringing this this development to town. We'd like to to increase the number of residential units within walking distance to downtown. I understand perfectly well that there's been a lot of residential development and apartment development, but most of that or all of that has been has been outside of the downtown area. The idea here is to help rejuvenate the downtown, make it more lively and livable and lived in. There's a substantial amount of new commercial space that we're proposing with this project. Commercial, retail, restaurant, maybe some office. Financial, that's the kind of space we're building. Obviously, there's going to be with with an increase in value of the property, a significant increase in tax revenue to the to the town of Bridgewater. We are proposing one and two-bedroom apartments, and statistically, that has a low impact on the schools, especially when measured against the the new tax revenue. We're going to be eliminating the industrial site, which is near downtown, which we think will have a benefit for bringing residents and and commercial uses and retail uses into the downtown area. We're getting rid of some old buildings, which probably need to be removed and cleaning up some difficult conditions on the land, which we're working with DEP or will be working with DEP or continuing to work with DEP in order to to get that done. And as you may know, this area abuts the town river, so that's sort of important for environmental reasons. The old plan that we brought in showed only twelve thousand square feet of new commercial space, a hundred and seventy-two units. And as you can see, we're scrapping that. The the new concept incorporates on the northern side of the site. Hopefully, you can see my cursor. We were able to get control of the two properties on that northern side, which we didn't have before. So we're proposing a building there, the building in back as residential and the building on the southern side of the site as a as mixed use, mixed residential and commercial. The the proposal contains over fifty thousand square feet of new retail, commercial and office space and a hundred and forty-eight new residential units. So that's, as I said, that's an increase. The fifty thousand square feet of commercial is an increase from the old design that had only twelve thousand square feet and the one hundred and forty-eight residential units is a decrease from the one seventy-two from the prior design. And this is just a bigger view of the new design. And basically, so we've got the three buildings, and this is our current renderings for these buildings. And again, I want to reiterate that at this stage of the process, we've done a lot of design work. We've done a lot of thinking and work with the with the architects and with the civil engineers, wetlands engineers, because we have to deal with some weapons issues on the property and DEP. But we're here to get get feedback from you. So although we have designed our concept for this, we're happy to hear criticism of that and ideas for improving that before we finalize our designs and finalize our our civil and environmental engineering. This is the southern building. It is the mixed-use building. There's over thirty-two thousand square feet of retail and commercial space on the first floor of the left-hand side of this. So that's on this side here. There are apartments over that. We have specifically designed this so that close to Broad Street, it's only three stories high, and then it increases to the four stories. And then the entire bottom half of the L here is commercial, three stories. The back building is sort of a U. We used to have the U facing one way. We flipped that around. A hundred and so so actually, to go back, there's thirty residential units in that mixed use. Hundred and eighteen, sorry about that, hundred and eighteen residential apartments in the back building. It is four stories. We have green space and landscaping planned and some amenities areas, outdoor grills, paths and other amenities. And in that building also is some community space and our leasing office. We are still having an internal discussion about what exactly the amenities will look like, whether there's a pool or no pool and and what might go in there, but that is an evolving discussion. And again, happy for some feedback on that. The building on the north side, which is all commercial, the configuration shows up a little bit different in the site plan, and that's a function of both dynamic tension between the wetlands engineer, the traffic engineer and civil engineers. So the building is sort of moving around a little bit, but this is the 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 type and design that we they we hope to have. That is a drive-through. It is a banking use on the first floor there, and then we anticipate that those will be probably offices, office space, and we are also, we're considering whether we've we've heard that there is a a need for for office condos or need or desire for office condos, so we may structure it legally in that in that way. But again, we're trying to figure out the best way to go with that. So as a sort of a summary, the three buildings. One is mixed. One is residential, one is commercial and open space all around. We're working on the parking number. There's a lot of parking spaces that we're going to need. We want to have just the right amount of parking. We have other projects where we have where we have been pushed to reduce the parking, and that has caused issues. So we want to make sure that that we don't have too few parking spaces. And I understand full well that the downtown area has some parking challenges, and we don't, we don't want to exacerbate those. We want to, we want to make sure that our project is self-sufficient from a parking standpoint. So what we did, the the way that we came up with the design that we did and and the ratios that we have is what you're seeing in front of you is a fully compliant plan with your bylaw. It would have been four stories, commercial on the first story of every building. It would have included mixed uses on each of the buildings. We looked at that design, and that design produces twenty-five percent. Obviously, if there's four stories and the first floor is is all commercial, twenty-five percent commercial. We looked at that plan and said, is that a good plan? And and determined that that really isn't from the standpoint of what's what's going to be desirable to live in, what's going to be good for the town of Bridgewater, what's going to look good. This plan itself, although fully compliant, really doesn't satisfy a lot of the design requirements that that your board has as far as aesthetics go. And from from the standpoint of being a workable space, it it doesn't work that well. In fact, it works very poorly to have that commercial space in the back of the development rather than pushing it out to the front, which is why we overall, the project is a mixed use, but we've we've weighted commercial space in by putting all commercial in that northern building, a mixed use in the southern building, that's a long Broad Street and then residential in the back. And then we took those ratios and said, okay, if we built the good project that we thought would be successful, that would be would be a project that both we and the town of Bridgewater would be proud of, what would it look like? And that's how we came up with our plan. We also conducted conducted and had a a market study done on the commercial and office uses in Bridgewater and in communities like Bridgewater. And it was not a rosy picture. We feel that that fifty thousand square feet of new commercial space is going to be a real challenge for us to fill. But we understand that that's important to the board to have a ratio of residential to commercial, especially in mixed use and CBD, but we also want the project. Of residential to commercial, especially in mixed use and C B D, but we also want the project to be successful. Uh, it doesn't do anybody any good to have um empty commercial space. Um, sitting around or to get a project approved. Uh, by the planning board that can never get built because it isn't economically feasible. Um, and I've just uh, I've I've pulled out some of the tidbits from the market study that we had done. Um, a- and I know also that I just recently heard that uh that Olympia Sports is pulling out as well. Um, you know, some of the things that we want, that that we see that could happen is. As we build this new commercial space, maybe pulling the successful businesses from the current space into our new space. We can't help that from happening, but we don't want to make it uh true too dramatic. So that uh that brings down the other downtown areas. And just quickly, what we need to go through as far as permitting goes. Uh, originally, we did need to have the rezoning done, uh that I get to cross off the list. Um, it's a site plan review and special permit with you folks. Uh, we have to go through a a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We already had a uh submitted an Anred and have an ORAD, that's a. Uh, Order of Resource Area Delineation, basically telling us exactly or an agreement. Um, between us and the Conservation Commission, exactly where those wetland lines are. Um, one of the buildings at least will need to go through a historical commission to approve its demolition. Um, we are um going through the process of already demolishing one sixty eight. Broad Street and we went through that historical commission um procedure with them. Uh, in order to get peak roofs, uh we're gonna need some um some relief from the zoning board. Um, so that it can um can have those peaked roofs. And I need, if there may be other things that we need to go through, I'll work with Shane to make sure we hit all of them as we go through it. And as I think I mentioned, uh, we are going through a process with the Department of Environmental Protection, D E P. With respect to some substances that are on the property. Um, and I think we are also going to, you know, state access permit because it is state road. And we might be filing a uh E I R as well because of the number of the increased number of parking spaces. Um, and quickly, uh. And I think this is important, uh we do the permitting. We do the general contracting, uh we do the site work. And we're not building this to sell it, we build these projects and we hang on to them. Um, and and that's important because we take a lot of pride in our properties and a lot of pride in our work. And we have to live with everything we do or don't do. Um, and uh we uh keep these projects and pro- and properties. In our portfolio, the the plan is forever, there's no plan to ever sell them. Um, the, there's more information about our, our uh. Uh, company in those slides, hopefully you have access to those, you can see them. But at this point, um, I I guess I'm gonna uh wrap up my presentation. And then uh let you guys give me some some feedback to the extent you want to. Uh, my hope is maybe that even uh you may have thoughts tonight. But you also may think of things later on that maybe through Shane, you can filter them out to us. Uh, but we do hope to be able to. Um, start doing the final design and put together um submission documents. Soon, um, and you know, our goal is is to uh permit and and build this.
Alright, so. That just, thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, could I have um any board comments, anybody wishes to speak on the project or ask questions, go ahead?
Um, I'll start with a few, um. First of all, any comment I make is, this is obviously not a public hearing and it's not our own presentation, so don't hold me to anything that uh. I say, first of all, I do uh like the idea of peak roofs, that uh is important in my mind, so. And the buildings uh, right, you know, it's difficult to come up with a nice building when you're talking about a four story building. Um, building three, though, the commercially used building, um. To me, it looks to be, need to be redone, just that to me, it's not a very. Pretty building. The uh question, um, you didn't mention access onto Broad Street, um. Is uh, are you gonna do that, uh, you know, is it gonna be an issue, are you gonna need the crosswalks, things like that should be uh brought up?
Mister Jimmy, and I'm sorry, uh, this is Steve Meltzer again. My co- my computer rebooted itself, I I ran across the hall to to Jerry's office, I didn't hear your first comment about.
I thought the first comment was that the the building, the lab, the commercial building was uh. Not very eye appealing to me, the other two were, I guess, okay, but the number three doesn't sound, doesn't look uh nice to me, that's just my. My question was the uh, the access onto um Broad Street in and out for all these cars. Whether you're aware or not, the uh ish, the town has issues with regard to uh. Both um water and sewage, um, have you talked and my question would be whether you have talked to appropriate people. As to whether this is going to affect that talent. And I think you you answered one of my questions about, you have done a study, you feel you can. Fill these uh apartments in and businesses up, I take it, and you intend to. Uh, keep the properties and that, that's positive in my mind. Thing would be important for the board anyway, for you to give us a list of the properties that you have. In the area or wherever, so we can either um look at them online or actually go see them. And see what uh how you've uh worked, how you've uh worked with those properties, that's important. Right now, that's, that comes off the top of my head.
Okay, so so you know, uh, I'm no good at design, we leave that to our architects, uh, I I like that. Building up north, but if you have specific suggestions as to. Uh, you know, wh- what kind of look and feel you'd rather see, we can certainly work with the architects on that. With respect to the traffic issues and the access issues, we we. As I said, we've been working with the traffic engineer, uh, which is McMahon, who uh. Has done a lot of work with your downtown, uh, we specifically engage them because they are very familiar with your downtown. Um, and and we'll make sure that we work through any concerns that that there are with respect to that, water and sewer, we have to. We we haven't had a specific conversation, but obviously that should be part of our process going forward. Um, to make sure that uh those utilities are sufficient.
Just and just to comment on the the water and I know we had a previous meeting discussion. Uh, DPW is just entering introductory uh conversations. Uh, with the town in regards to uh water usage, so there's nothing definitive at this time, uh, DPW is just. Having some preliminary discussions in terms of all things water and sewer and utility connections.
So we are bullish on um on our ability to fill these. Uh, residential units, we are concerned about the ability to fill this much commercial space. The residential may have to carry the commercial for a little while, but um but it's all in a numbers game. And if we can make those numbers work, um, then then, you know, it could be a very exciting project. So I'm not sure of that.
No, if I just may, I comment on that, I mean, the commercial ob- obviously is important to us, and I I wouldn't be. Too negative on it, I think it it may come obviously with the residential and also sports. Is leaving out because of Bridgewater, I think it's it's shutting down. The number of places, the company itself is in is uh in somewhat trouble, so.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a trend that we see uh with brick and mortar, uh, that's just the concern, but. Um, but also it it makes other commercial space available in competition with this. Um, that's the way we look at it, but but hey, maybe you're right, uh, we're happy to fill that commercial space quickly, that would be great.
Any other, any other board questions or comments? Why I'm waiting for this to volunteer, Mister Meltzer, I just have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so what 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 did the, what is the percentage of the overall, what is the total square footage of the project you have designed? And what, how much commercial space is there, is it twenty five percent, is it thirty percent?
Twenty five percent is is where it where it calculates out, uh, the the raw numbers I have in the other room. Um, but as we go through that pro- the process, we can give those to you, but it's it's basically twenty five percent. Um, and uh, and and there are, there are things, uh, and I think Mister Jimmy had mentioned them, there are things that we can do. To sort of mitigate that, that gap between twenty five and thirty percent with respect to some. Some uh mitigation that we can do on the site, maybe some. Uh, some public areas down by the river, depending upon whether the um, the Concom will let us do that. Um, work on crosswalks, either uh directly adjacent to the site or further up the roadway. Things that uh that I know the planning board has been interested in, having spent a lot of time watching your meetings.
But you can, would you consider removing the number of residential units to get to the thirty percent, but not increasing the commercial space?
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
Would you consider reducing the number of residential units?
Well, based up, based on our numbers, uh, Mister Chairman. As I said, I think the the residential is going to have to carry the commercial for some time. And it's it's just, we we have to, we have to design this in a way that's economically feasible. Or or just can't be built. And and I would say we did reduce it already from the one seventy two to to one forty eight. From our old design.
So so to follow up on Mister Jimmy's um conversation, what what ratio?
No, no, it's about seventy thirty, seventy percent two bedroom, thirty percent one bedroom. And and that that may, that may change a little bit, but it'll be roughly. Um, you know, between sixty eight and seventy five percent. Two bedroom.
Would you be willing to do more one bedrooms, the western water demand and school impacts and things like that, or no?
Well, uh, our numbers don't show, and and the national numbers and local statistics don't show that two bedrooms. Uh, add uh add too many kids to the school system, and I'll I'll have those numbers for you. Again, uh, we have to, we have to follow the numbers here, we have to do something, do a project that's. Um, that's gonna work financially. We can look at that, but um it it uh. That's, that's sort of the the going uh ratio in these kinds of projects and what gets filled.
The a four, um, in our, in our zoning recomplication, we haven't done it yet, but in our master plan, we asked to explore inclusionary zoning. Where over the tent is that, Bridgewater, so we have a.
Basically a state on the forty B applications if we wish to, um, would you be open to? Ten percent affordable on this project, or would you not be?
Uh, we we can make that part of the discussion, I I wouldn't, I I'm not gonna say no. And again, it's it's for us, it's a math problem. Um, and if that uh that helps us get us over the uh. You know, you know, we're not gonna make it a twenty five percent affordable, but um, but we could certainly. Talk about uh affordable units.
Well, okay, no, I just, I, the question I had maybe even he was, I just said, would you be willing to do? Ten percent, that's what we probably do for inclusionary zoning at some point. Uh, not not twenty five, but ten percent, just just so that the project would have a, you know, a neutral effect on our S F I numbers.
I'd be happy to do the numbers and see if we could do that, um, I can't, can't commit to that right now, but we can. I I'm not gonna say no.
Last question I have is phasing, how how do your three buildings propose?
You may not have thought about this yet, but how, no, I guess my concern is that the residential gets built and the commercial level gets built, huh? How, uh, uh, excuse me, the residential gets built and commercial level gets built, how would you plan on phasing the project, the three buildings?
Yeah, most likely we would uh, we would probably build the the mixed use. And the residential in back. Uh, we jump right in on that, uh, with respect to the all commercial building. Uh, we probably want to get a certain um commitments for a certain amount of tenants before we. Um, started building that, um, and if Mister Jamie is right, then uh, then that would be no problem and we'd be building it. Uh, pretty quickly.
And last question, I just, somebody had asked me this, so I told them and asked a question. Is there any thought about just to minimize impacts and to try to? Get a higher, um. You know, per capita or account for spendable income things downtown, and have we, have you considered fifty five plus at all, or is that not off the table?
I guess that's not off the table, but uh, I don't know that the entire project could work that way. Um, you you know, the, our numbers are gonna be, our market. Uh, rates are gonna be pretty decent, uh, based on our our market studies. So we will be bringing in some um, some folks who can go to restaurants and. And uh, spend, have expendable uh income to use downtown. Uh, we we don't expect that this will be student housing.
Can you never consider, so would would you consider selling them as condos, or do you want to keep it as rentals?
No, I think we'll keep them, keep them as rentals. As I said, we make sell the um. Sell the uh office units, make office condos.
Well, thank you, those are my questions, I and I, I hope the board thinks, right, I know we just got the full presentation today, so. You know, hopefully the board thinks about the project and get uh Shane some comments and and things in writing as well over the next week, so.
That would be great.
Can I ask a follow up question, Mister Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, anybody, I'm done with my questions.
I you, I think you mentioned um that the um, excuse me. That you've done a study on commercial and wasn't good, I take it, your your prognosis for renting is good.
It it is, yes, I I mean, it's not as good as it was. Uh, uh, before. Uh, price increases and and the strain on the economy. But uh, I'm pretty bullish on the economy longer term and the numbers and uh. Numbers are good because, you know, there's more pressures now on homeownership. And um millennial uh use of 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 higher end apartments like this is actually increasing. So, we're pretty.
Based on what you just said, I I do regard these as higher end apartments that you're gonna be building?
Well, we, yeah, we do.
I'm, okay. And and again, just uh again to follow from the chair, um. It assuming we don't fall into a recession or something, how long do you look at the build out on this? You talking about two years, three years, or you know, you have no idea?
Uh, no, we would um, we would, uh, uh, we have to let the um, the foundry wind down its business, so. Uh, we've promised that we'd give them some time to do that, but um, you know, in September, when you give us our permits, we'll be ready to go. And that was about the seasons.
No, we assume, I'm just asking, assuming everything is moving in the right direction, are you talking? Five years, four years?
Three years, three years, yeah, this is, this is, we're we're ready to go as soon as, as soon as we have the permits we need. We want to get this done, and we've been working on it for a few years, as you, as you know, we've been here for a while. Uh, we're excited to to get in there and and get this project going.
Well, from my my perspective, uh, I think a project like this could work, um. But again, from the perspective of planning board, we don't want to approve something that's gonna, we're gonna be sorry for down the road, that's all, so we have to. It may take time, but we want to do it right.
Uh, absolutely, completely agree.
Well, I'll avoid questions, Mister McDonald, Mister Ross. MJ?
Not not this time for me.
No questions.
Feedback?
No questions for me this evening, Mr. Driscoll.
Kind of a quiet quarter night.
So we're happy, we're happy for feedback and, and, and ideas and questions. Again, probably best, you know, I'll let Chairman handle it, but probably best through Shane. And take it from there.
I mean, I'll open up, I assume Mr. Hunt has his hand up, open up the public comment for a little while. If members of the public want to chime in, maybe they'll help us think this through and provide some meaningful feedback, so. Mr. O'Brien, you have you?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was it?
So do you want to handle the public and who, in the order? I see Dr. Hunt has his hand up.
Yeah, anyway, you want to do it, Mr. Chair. You want to, I just wanted, like I said, it is not a public hearing. The comments can be noted in the minutes, but nothing's pertaining to this and it's a concept plan, so I'm happy to.
As long as members from the public are just looking for ideas and feedback and it's not a public hearing, so.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt, Dr. Hunt?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, and also the folks that are here. I fully understand this is not a hearing. But the first thing I want to do is thank the applicants, future applicants on working with the planning board and not politicizing this process. I think it's really fantastic when we have a cooperative effort that gets the right project for the town of Bridgewater. As a matter of record, I am a member of the Energy Committee. I actually chair it. And I'm also a member and vice chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm at ID Austin Street here in Bridgewater, thirty-six year resident. I note from past work that I have done that the Old Colony Planning Council had put together a potential traffic modification on the entrance of the Roach Brothers Plaza. One of your entrances is right across the street from Dunkin' Donuts. There is often a backup northbound trying to get into Dunkin' Donut, Dunkin' Donuts to get their morning coffee, et cetera. That situation may not be seen in a traffic study. It should be looked at again, and I would encourage you all to contact OCPC, get their study, get their thinking about how to improve the flow into the Roach Brothers Plaza as well as to your entrance. I'm glad McMahon is associated with this. They've done a good job for Bridgewater in the past. But the traffic area there could become a more of a problem than you would pick up on just a simple traffic study. Third point, as I indicated, I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. We do have funds that could be recommended to the Town Council for appropriation for affordable housing. And I would encourage you to explore that option. Not promising anything here, but simply indicating options. The fact that you're working with the town is the second major development in town that I have great appreciation for because you are working with the town. Next point. I like the balance you're trying to drive at for commercial and housing. And I thank you for the economic study. I would hope that that could become public soon because that's a real critical driver. Many people say we want more commercial, we want more commercial. The master plan that was developed recently indicated the town of Bridgewater does not have sufficient acreage that's available for commercial development of major types. So this is one of the reasons we think downtown should be developed to increase the commercial, but it's, it's a pipe dream to think that we can move our current tax rate for commercial in a significant way. So getting twenty-five percent, thirty percent commercial in this property is helpful. And I think I'll stop there. I look forward to future discussions and hearings on this, but I do think the traffic issue that I mentioned and the potential for other affordable housing, workforce housing, et cetera, might be a consideration that would be useful for the developer and for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, make a unsolicited comment on what Miss Carlton just said, I mean, the, the issue with Dunkin' Donuts, in my mind, is people should simply get out of their parking, go in the parking lot and get out of the power to pick up donuts instead of backing it out of Broad Street. That would solve the whole problem.
They do have an app.
Any other members of the board or the public who would like to ask a question or provide a comment?
We do have a raised hand of, for Pat Neri.
Hello. I have a couple of questions and I agree with everything Mr. Hunt, Dr. Hunt just stated. Also, I want to thank Mr. LaRusso and what is that noise?
His feedback.
Feedback from your computer.
And Mr. Meltzer from Edgewood. I think they plan to comply with our zoning regulations, which is a real advantage. They're not trying to do anything outside the guidelines, which is very helpful and we haven't found that always. I also wonder if they might consider or try to make the facades more or less contemporary. We have a very New England town and it just, I, I always say, please don't make that next building look like the West Bridgewater Fire Station. It's just so horrendous. You know, just not, not with what us New Englanders would like to see. Anyway, I would also wonder if you have thought about the increase or, or improvement of our technology in this area for the businesses that you plan. You know, we're kind of stuck with Comcast, so I suppose you must have taken those problems into consideration. It's a, it's a real big deal in our town. And also, let's see. I hope that your plans, when you actually present them, will consider following the dark sky regulations. I always mention those to a, a new developer in our town. It's, it's a real push in the recent years. People are not that familiar with how much environmental damage these brilliant lights cause to our environment and our wildlife. So I hope you will consider that. We do plan to include it in our zoning regulations that's going to be recodified soon. But it doesn't exist right now, so I hope you will consider it and also plant, your plantings, I hope that they will all be natives so that they're again, it's better for our environment and it's better for our future. And I think, oh, also, I don't know if your roofs can handle solar, but I hope that is what is in our future. We've had many, many buildings in Bridgewater that haven't taken advantage of that. We don't need to reduce our forests or trees. We need more solar on the roofs, not on the land. And I think that's it. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Mrs. Jewel has her hand up, Shane.
Hi. First I want to say thank you for reducing some of the residential units. I think that's a, a good move in the right direction. I was happy to see that. And I was wondering if on the study that you've done about the impact on the schools of one and two bedroom units and other parts of the state, if you'd be willing to post that online on your website or share it so we could all take a look at that. I haven't seen that study, but I would like to see it as a resident. I am concerned about the amount of residential growth in the town. I'm not going to try to hide that fact. So I think that the impact on schools is something I'd like to just see a little bit more information on. I did like Mr. Driscoll's comment about the fifty-five plus because as this project has been discussed in town, there's been a lot of questions about that. Maybe this could be a fifty-five plus. And there does seem to be more of a need for that. A lot of people want to stay within the town. They like the community. And I also think it would give you a good opportunity to attract other retail development in there that could be of service to an aging population. And have maybe one building devoted to fifty-five plus and the appropriate tie-in services might be attractive to potential tenants. And Pat Neri mentioned the design aspect. I agree with her that the town and every project you listen to, make it more New England, make it more historical, make it more brick, make it more stone. I think that would help ease that project into the look of the community. A bit more costs certainly need to be considered, but I think you'll find a lot of the costs of those materials have come down dramatically and not only are they cost efficient, they also offer a higher degree of safety when it comes to fire. And now you're with a building that's four stories tall. That's certainly something to take into consideration. That's, I think, pretty much what all that I had to offer. Oh, one last question, I'm sorry. The property there and the family that's owned the property for years, Perkins, it does have a historical significance. And I don't know if there's been any thought to that. I know there's a of reclaiming some of the materials and maybe using those in small pieces of the project or making a, a small area in a lobby that speaks to the history or museum-like pieces on the wall in a glass case or not looking for, you know, fifty thousand square foot museum above Bridgewater, but something just to keep the memory of some of those older buildings, you know, in front of the population. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment or board comments?
I have one more. The, first of all, this jewel's comment about some plaque or something showing the significance of the property, I think is a good idea. And it doesn't have to be a minor, major thing, but it would be nice. My main question is that we have asked a few times in the past for some monetary mitigation. And we, our new zoning does give us some teeth in terms of mitigation funds, but my general question would be that, would you be willing to offer some sort of mitigation? We've done in the past regarding, with regard to tree cuttings for replacement of trees. In fact, we just received some money recently. I'm just curious as to your view on that.
Yeah, well, so I, I think I mentioned we, we'd be happy to find some way to, to help the downtown with, as I said, you, I think that there were plans to do some, some work on sidewalks and, and crosswalks as you, as you walk towards downtown. I think that's appropriate given that our hope is that the people that move in will be walking to downtown and want to be safe. And, and as, that also maybe some public areas down by the river that are adjacent, that are part of this property adjacent to the river, to the extent to Conservation Commission, but any other ideas as well? You know, the, the idea of just monetary mitigation, although.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was talking about for a specific purpose.
Yeah.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so Dr. Hunt, you have another comment? Your hand is up. Are you, is that an old hand?
No, no, it's a new hand. It's my left hand, not my right hand. I, I just, as Energy Committee Chair, I would like to work offline with you about a different alternative to alternative energy production. It's small wind. And I'd like to talk with you about that offline. There is a developer in town who's developed a device that will harvest wind at five miles an hour in its rooftop.
Happy to talk to you.
All right, so Pat, the Shane or Pat can put you in touch with that. The other thing, as I will simply mention, the other element that the Community Preservation Act allows us to fund with recommendations to the Town Council for appropriation is recreational needs. So maybe some conversations with the Community Preservation Committee would be useful in terms of potential canoe put-ins, small park areas, et cetera. Not that I'm offering town money, but I'm offering, offering you potentials for making this project even more sellable. Thank you.
This is Jewel. Do you have your hand up again or is that?
I do. Thank you. One quick question. You did mention that this project was similar to other higher end apartment complexes that you currently own and operate. Could you tell us which one would be most comparable?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I, I think in the past we have given, and, and I'm not sure, I don't have my presentation in front of me. I, I might have listed some of those in the presentation.
Steve, I believe the, the link that you did provide, I think, takes it to your guys' website. So everyone's available to check that link out. It's in the chat to check out other projects that they.
Right. And, and, and we're happy for anybody who wants to, but especially the board members as we get closer or into this process to, to give some tours of other, our other properties. So they can see what we do and how we do it.
Which of the other properties would be most comparable in terms of an upper end?
I'd say Walpole. Yeah, Liberty, Liberty Station in Walpole.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I just ask if there's no more comments from the public or from the board? Now, we don't leave the developers hanging in terms of comments forever, maybe Shane a week from this Friday to the end of next week, kind of a comment cutoff period?
Uh, I, it's difficult, it's difficult to have a comment cutoff period when this is kind of a informal discussion.
All right, well, just, I'm just asking anybody on the board, or the public that's on this meeting that you know, it takes some time to review the plans and think about the discussion this evening. If you have anything else to add, try to get this changed sooner than later, that's all.
I'm ha, yeah, I'm happy to accept comments throughout this period. I, I just sent a link into the chat as well. I just want people to be attentive of if this is placed on an agenda, you know, the usual suspects of the butter notification process will be notified. But just i- in terms of any meetings, you know, check out the Bridgewater Agenda Center to see what's on the agenda. Everyone here came, so you know, you guys have a great ability to find when meetings occur and how to access Zoom, but if, you know, there's information at the Agenda Center and we also additionally put all our plans and applications on our website as well, and we did provide a link for this presentation. So yeah, happy to have this continuing discussion. And keep everyone in the loop of all things.
All right, thank you for coming in this evening.
It's our pleasure. Thank you very much and everybody for your comments and we look forward to working with you all some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Buttons.
Let me go back to the agenda, Shane.
Sure thing. I think we're down to or just at the end. Uh, yeah, minutes and, yeah, minutes.
Did I do, yeah?
Well, I guess for.
All right, so next item on the agenda. Eight of five. Mr. McDonald, at our last meeting, you considered being the CPC representative. Have you or anybody else on the board given that more thought?
Unfortunately, on my end, I just don't think the scheduling will work out. It's a shame, but.
I mean, if, if nobody wants to do it, I'll, like I said, I would do it, but if somebody on the board is willing and wants to do it, I'd be happy to have somebody else do it. Anybody?
Yeah, I placed it on the agenda just as a continuing discussion.
So, so Shane, I'll, I'll be willing to do it if, but if somebody between now and the next meeting volunteers, I'll be happy to step aside.
I will put on the eight, seven meeting.
I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that that's filled because I think it's an important board and I'm I'm happy to do it if I need to do it for a year or so, so.
Sure. I'll, I'll schedule it for the September seventh agenda anyways, that we'll just have it placed for a, a call to vote.
Okay. But, but by no means, I mean, if, if somebody has a desire to do it on the board, I'll be happy to to step aside and let you do it. I just, I, I'll fill it just to fill it and make sure it gets, you know, we, we get represented. We had planning board events for five eleven twenty-two and seven six twenty-two. We had planning board minutes for five eleven twenty-two and seven six twenty-two. Does anybody have comments on that? Did everybody have a chance to read them? Do you wanna vote on them, continue it? What's what's the will of the board? Do we have a motion in the minutes for five eleven twenty-two and seven six twenty-two?
Why don't we continue with the next meeting? Steve will be here then too.
Okay. Are you okay with that one still, Brian?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's it's up to the board. I I felt comfortable more with the five eleven. Um, I know the six meeting from the, I think, June.
I haven't read the July ones yet. I did read the May, so.
I I'd be more, I'd be happy if we uh could get the May ones approved because that's from the meeting where we had the discussion of the um. The zoning changes, uh, it was a joint meeting, so.
Okay. Ray, you okay with doing five eleven this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Say that again?
I'll make a motion, we approve five eleven.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
And Mr. McDonald, any discussion? Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask, and we'll hold off on seven six twenty-two.
No.
Um, Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything? Or any members of the board have any comments, uh?
Yeah, I do. I'll just give you a quick update on the tree board. We uh, we have concluded our uh. What we regard as our. Our. Responsibility come up with uh perspective of responsibilities in the tree board, and once we get the. Minutes, um, and those will be approved, which will be shortly, we will uh then send it to uh town manager. Who will then hopefully move it along to become the permanent board uh in the near future. And uh, secondly, I think if you're not aware that my understanding is that the mitigation for the um. Route eighteen Bedford Street uh project, which they just started, mitigation funds are in, so. That's it.
Great, thank you for your time on that, right?
Yeah, stole my, stole my thunder on my comments, yeah. Uh, that's okay, no, that's part of it. Um, yeah, like I said, uh, I said earlier to Ray and Ray sent me an email. We did receive the uh twenty thousand dollars um. As part of the planning board decision, so I did sign off on the permit for uh nine hundred, the nine hundred Bedford Street project. Um, they did give us notice that they would be starting uh forty-eight hours before they were doing their tree clearing. Um, so there, they have their permit from all indications and they're clearing on site, so if you. Or anyone receives any calls, um, feel free to forward them my way. I can kind of explain the situation. I've been kind of fielding a few right now. Um, but I can let um anyone know if they have any concerns or questions about what's going on there. And I think the other one I have is that um Scotland Boulevard at their last special meeting, a lot has. We approved the uh bond amount and we did receive said bond amount. Uh, four hundred plus thousand dollars that we have deposited with the treasurer's office, so um. Uh, we got sign-offs and uh we did return the um. The lot releases to the board, um, so I think that's moving along. Uh, we got updated plans for um. The Fruit Street property, uh, we got new as-built plans um that need some updating with drainage, so uh. Uh, our department as well as Greg Tanzi are reviewing those plans, um, but. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else on our radar. Appreciate um. Uh, the comments, I guess, from the uh, the public, not public, the presentation. Um, but I just wanna keep members of the public and the board in the loop, uh, when, if, and when that project ever appears before this board or other boards.
Um. Mr. O'Brien, did you say Fruit Street?
Yes.
Did we sign off that building? Sorry, completed.
Yes, we, no, I'm just saying we've received as-built plans, so there were some. Things with the as-built plans in terms of certain drainage aspects of, so.
That that didn't comply with the plan or?
No, it was just a, we just needed more information on the plan.
Okay, okay. All right. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Jimmy, do a second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Now, yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, Pat.